My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America. In the future, we will protect each other, one nation, united in the world, with justice for all.
Keep your all that hardware jingling.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening. If you would, please mute or turn off any of your electronic devices that you have. And prior to this meeting, we had a executive session to talk about contractual issues. With that said, we'll move to roll call.
Mr. Ponte.
Here.
Mrs. Ecker. Mrs. Hans.
Here.
Mrs. Moretti.
Here.
Mrs. Polovich.
Chair.
Mr. Pauli. Mrs. Rinaldi.
Here.
Miss Arno.
Here.
Mr. Polino.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor to any comments from the community on any of the agenda items we have. Please come up, state your name and where you're from and appreciate you being here.
Brad Derringer from Cheswick and just looking for some updates on the field. The construction up at the field, if we could give any updates on that.
Actually, one of our agenda items relates to the field. So when we get to that point, we'll, we can elaborate. If the board wants to discuss anything, we can do it at that time.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Any other comments on the agenda items? Seeing then, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. This evening, as you heard by all the jingling of all the medals in the crowd, we have our girls WPIL gold medalist and PIA double A silver medalist here with us this evening. We want to thank all of the family members that are here today and our student athletes that are able to join us today and those that could not join us this evening. I know the flu is going around and some people aren't feeling well. We want to thank you so much for your support, for your guidance, for your cheering, for your laughter, for your patience, and especially to our girls, we appreciate how hard you work in the classroom. Winning these types of awards are really important. Nothing's more important than your future. So these things are great and they're fantastic, but what I see in the classroom makes me feel really good because I know how hard you work. Mr. Loviski talks about you and bracks about you all the time. So does Ms. Gibbon. So families rest assured, your girls are outstanding on, on the pitch, but they're even more outstanding in the classroom and that's, that's really going to take you far. So on behalf of the Allegheny Valley School District, like if you're dry, congratulate the girls. We do have some certificates, some gift cards and some dynamo pins. What I will do is Mr. Polino, our board president, will join me up front. We'll call the girls down. And then at the very end, if anyone would like to speak, coaches would like to speak, anyone, you're more than welcome to do so. And then we'll keep everyone here in case you want to take some pictures and then you are free to leave unless of course you'd like to stay for our board meeting. You will show the video first? Okay, we have a video first. So sit back and relax. So when we call your names, you just come on up front. Mr. Polino has a gift card and a dynamo pin for each of you. And again, we're so very proud of you. Thank you so much for all the thrills, all the excitement you brought into our community. We are so dynamo proud of every single one. Thank you. So first, let's get Coach Bentley down here. Mark Bentley. We do have Starbucks gift cards, but it's my candidate, big drink, made it a small printer, but give it a shot. Coach, did let you stay out there. We also have McKenna Krabs, the other coach. Charlie McLaafferty. Ariana, Captain Garom. Kaylee Marchal F. B. Brianna Ross. Sarah Lady. Angelina Wade. Adeline Richards. Lindsay Shonda. Carissa Walsh. That's the Derringer. Molly Hurley. Genevieve Compton. Bailey Hobbs. McKenna Hobbs. And Caitlin, oh no, Caitlin Shaw. And Mark Hallie. So let us get out of the way here. Would any of the coaches or principals or board members like to say anything to our young ladies?
Well, I mean, both the parents, you know, our largest classroom that we have is our sports team. And we feel as a board that it's one of the most important things that these, these kids are able to get together and learn a lot of things about character, sportsmanship. But it also shines the light on the school and what we're doing. And especially when you have a group like this, which grades that they have, it's wonderful for our community. Makes it easier for us to invest in the things that we're doing for our sports in this area. We're a small school and some people, like, you know, there's all kinds of things about what we should do and that we want to have first-class classrooms and facilities for these kids who they deserve, they always. And what a wonderful group that we have here as well. So if any of the other board members want to stand up.
I got something to say to these girls. I have driven a lot of these girls since kindergarten. They have grown from brats to beautiful young ladies and a little proud of them, right?
I just have to say real quick, thank you so much for giving our family a great excuse to go to Hershey for the weekend. It was a lot of fun. It was so much fun watching you all. And I just want to say a special congratulations to those of you who are also on the basketball team and for taking us into the playoffs and doing as well as you did. I, and it's always amazing, as you said, how many students in our district are involved in sports and in multiple sports and the talent that you display on the field is just amazing. So thank you so much.
I'd just say, these girls have birthed me already at the very first, but they are an absolute credit to the community, not only for their play on the field, but how they carry themselves as people go on and off the field. They grew up pretty sick about what he said about their performance in the classroom, never ever have to worry about being, have to be ineligible. They're just an absolute credit to the community, credit to the school district and congratulations to you.
You know, if I may just add one thing, I go to a lot of sporting events, I did that, but athletes as well. I think the thing that always sticks out of how easy it is to recruit these kids, and it really is, parents. I know that getting kids, shipping them around and doing it since they're little, some of you, this might be your last ride, some of you are at the beginning of it, but it's just a really great group of young ladies. That truly is, I don't know another way to say it. They're nice kids. And that goes a long way. Like, sports is, I was telling my daughter today, we were having dinner, before we went back, we were talking about, she loves volleyball. I said, you know, sports you do because you're learning great, you're learning the facilities, you're learning to be a part of teams, you know, and more importantly, how you carry yourself. These girls certainly are, you bet me that, are just classic. I believe those are right guys. Parents, thank you and good job of bringing our community.
Yeah.
Ladies, do you want to, yeah, there folks, do you want to come down and make some pictures for the buckles? Excuse me, how, try to, if you'd like.
I don't think they can see you. You're okay.
I'm just going to take a picture. I don't think.
Just stay behind one of them.
Oh yeah. Folks, you are welcome to stay if you'd like. You're also welcome to leave if you'd like. Thank you again and congratulations.
That looks me old when I look at these kids.
How many, like, generally, how many Jeff Reese and the soccer games have you probably driven? How many championships?
There's two losses there.
But they're very nice girls.
They are.
After I introduced you, I realized. But I said.
Don't want to miss those stuff.
Just, you sure? Okay. Did Mr. Wade help you out? Thanks, Eric.
They got championship. Has that been discussed?
They, the others, they did do that. There was something that the board at the time said, they're going to make it to the support if they, they use new guys.
Yeah.
You know, we just haven't done it for so long. If you have all due people here.
Yeah, all that.
Yeah, and we'll, um.
What we're used to.
It's your robot.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Jan looks concerned because any.
Oh, okay. I have one other announcement while the girls and their parents are leaving. Dr. Raj Kapal shared this with me and I'm going to share it with all of you. This is presented to the Allegheny Valley School District in recognition of five years of outstanding commitment to continuing disclosure reporting for municipal bonds. With a dedication to transparency and accountability, your commitment over the last five years to set a standard of excellence in continuing disclosure reporting and positively impact your organization and the broader municipal market, DAC bond. And certainly, Dr. Raj Kapal, congratulations to you and your team and thank you for your hard work and dedication. Congratulations.
Just get a pin in the corner.
Those pink drinks are expensive if you've ever. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Just ready, uh, bill of payment or token payment?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Polino. Item 5.1, recommend the board approve the January 2025 treasurer's report, the payment of bills, disbursement ledger, and the accounts payable list.
Do you have a motion on the board? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hawke. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, savit. Enter your. Oh boy. All right, Operation Finance. I'll, I'll take that on then.
Yeah, I don't, it didn't come up.
Nope.
While we're doing that, Mr. Loviski, you're welcome to stay. You also, if you want to get home to your family, we completely understand. We appreciate you being here.
Just, if you go, okay, we'll move on. Item, consent item, consent agenda, Operation and Finance. Item 6.1 is to approve all the consent items, 6.2 to 6.13. Can I entertain a motion from one of the board members?
Send it.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any question on the items? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, savit. Please enter your. Under Operations in Finance. We have item 7.2, recommend the, entertain a motion to recommend the board approve the district 2025, 2026 district calendar as presented. And send a motion?
Send it.
The move of motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hawke. Any question on a motion?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I just first wanted to thank Dr. Raj Kapal and the administration. I've been on many committees for calendars over the years for schools and it is like not a job that I ever envy of anyone. It takes a lot of work and it's a lot of pulling in opinions from so many different people and so many different facets. There were a couple of minor changes that were noted just from last time. If everybody looked in their executive content that, just like switching around of clerical days and clarification of, the open house and parent teacher conference days that I personally am really favorable as a parent. And if I were a teacher, I would very be very much like that schedule as well. And then I just wanted to make a quick comment on the, the flexible instruction days and the remote days. Just, I think those are really good options that we should always utilize in place of a closure if possible. I think there are very good reasons to have a closure, like no heat and water main breaks and things like that. But I just, I just really want to put out there that I'm very much in favor, not only of having those flexible instruction days, but calling them. And again, and I've talked with Dr. Grace a many times and I would, I hope I am never the person that makes those decisions. So I don't quibble those decisions ever, but just, just encourage administration to make those calls as early as we can, especially since we can utilize those flexible instruction days. I just think they're a great thing, one of the maybe few good things to kind of come down to the pandemic era and that I'm really in favor of those when we have those tough calls or when. and that I'm really in favor of those when we have those tough calls or we're not forthcoming. But again, thank you. I don't know if anybody else had comments on the calendar or anything.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Please enter your vote selection. Move on to 7.3, Construction Drawings and Permit on the Artificial Turf, Springdale High School Soccer Field. Entertain a motion to recommend the board authorize Field Turf USA Incorporated to proceed with Phase Two services of construction drawings and permits related to the proposed artificial turf project of the soccer field at Springdale Junior and Senior High School at a cost of $55,000. This is the second part of a previously agreed on by the board proposal. This agreement was approved by board on 11/19/2024. Entertain a motion to approve this?
Motion.
A motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I said.
Second by Mr. Renaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And we'll go ahead with Phase Two. All right. At this point, we'll move on to Education, Ms. Sarno.
I guess I'll just fill in for Mrs. Ecker, just a brief announcement that for over 30 years, hundreds of Pittsburgh area students have participated in the Pittsburgh Public Theater Shakespeare Competition every February for the chance to perform in a special Shakespeare show at the O'Reilly Theater. Students must memorize and perform a piece from one of Shakespeare's plays as part of the audition process. The contest gives a new each year T-shirt to all participants. Today, we had nine high school students from SHS, and 17 Acmetonia students took part in that challenge. Thank you, Mrs. Sispaniac, for updating our schedules without alert today. And, uh, that's the only item I have besides our, uh, agenda item 8.2. Recommend the board approve Mr. Andrew Tensjares and Mrs. Megan Dale and qualified students to participate in the FBLA State Leadership Conference Competition in Hershey, PA from April 6th through 9th, 2025. The district will pay all sponsor costs associated with the trip, the cost of lodging, transportation, substitute teachers, and meals for students and staff.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Renaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Please enter your vote selection. Ms. Palavich, any report on technology?
Not much. A meeting was held last week. Fortunately, I was unable to personally attend. Some proposed changes were presented. That will be presented to the board shortly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Personnel, we're going to ask, Mr. Polino.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. Under 10.2, recommend the board accept with regret the resignation of the following, move my screen, following staff, Paige Lengy, Andrew Jeffers, David Krasinski, Zachary Wilhelm.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Palavich. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.3, recommend the board approve the employment of the following classified staff, Eric Selak, custodian, effective February 19th, 2025.
Motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Renaldi. Any question on the motion?
I have a question. Is he part-time or going to be full-time?
That is a full-time position.
Any other question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Please enter your votes.
Item 10.4, recommend the board ratify the memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Allegheny Valley Educational Support Personnel Association, AVESPA, to reinstate seniority for Aaron Butler after student teaching.
A motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Hold on, the second. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.5, recommend the board approve the employment of the following athletic staff, Chad Walsh, head coach football, $7,039. Count Kevin Kindler, seventh and eighth grade coach football, $3,344. Jaden Dahmerath, assistant coach track, $3,311.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Renaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.6, recommend the board approve the employment of the following custodial workers. They'll all be paid at $15 per hour, effective June 5th, 2025. Mary Anna Morgan, Jenny Mendez, Linda Crayson, Kim Oriet, Michael Dujek, and Terry Halazowski.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Renaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
That concludes personnel. Thank you, Mr. Polino.
Thank you. Ms. Sarno, emergency man.
Um, just two quick items. Looking forward to next month meeting. I did send an email very late into the day this afternoon, so I'm sure no one saw it yet, just to our committee, with the suggestion that we look at our times to include the board president, Mr. Polino, to join us next month to discuss a few items. I'd be really grateful to have you there, and as we move along with some of the things that we've been talking about. So, we'll update everybody on that. And then I just wanted to point out, there was published in the trib today, at least it was online today. I don't know if it was in the paper version yet, but there was a really nice article that was put out about Springdale alumni, Jordan Pushkar. He was killed in a act of gun violence several years ago. He was a 2019 Springdale graduate and a football player. And his family did form a foundation in honor of his life called the Flashlight, Flashlight Foundation. And during the first couple of years that they were formed, they really focused on providing financial aid to families who were recently, like, had recently lost someone to help with, like, funeral costs. They also advocated for changes to the system. They found out that it was literally a fax machine that was supposed to report certain things from here to Harrisburg, to help families get that kind of financial relief. And it literally just needed, like, to be hooked up or something, and they, they kind of referred to it as Jordan's lineup. There were things like that that they did, and they've sort of been shifting their gear to focus to really focus on the Springdale community, which was a community that Jordan really loved. So, they recently, they do, like, sell different items. They sold, like, beanies recently, and then recently they donated items and done projects with our local food bank. And, you know, as we did pass a resolution at the board level this past summer on secure firearm storage, that's actually how I first got connected with this family, was through my work through that, through Be Smart. A really big focus on the family is secure storage. Had a certain person locked up their firearm that night, the person who did give him, you know, might not have been able to carry out that plan. So, it's something that as a kind of recent graduate in 20, graduate in 2019, a football player, someone who loves Springdale, it's just something that really means a lot to them. So, I just asked the board and all of our community to check them out. Flashlight Foundation, and it's a good cause, and interesting to see where they'll kind of go. They really want to focus their foundational efforts here in the community, and I believe in the school district as well. So, um, just kind of wanted to make a little note of that. There's an article in the paper today, if anyone wants to check that out. That's all I have today, no voting items.
Thank you. Athletics, Mrs. Renaldi.
A report, and unfortunately, our two basketball teams lost their games, so they're out of the playoffs.
Thank you for that update.
Can I just add one, one item? During the recognition of the, the soccer team, you know, the parents, if you looked at their faces, the pride on their face, you know, to, to see their, their children, you know, who have grown into this. And, you know, I, I do want to just recognize the parents as well, because without them, you know, the kids wouldn't be where they are today. I think that speaks so much for our parents, who so many of them are Springdale grads themselves, and who have received that honor of going into the Whipple and state soccer. They're on their own, and now to see their children meet that success is, is just really nice for the community.
Well, while you mentioned that, he did, someone did come down and ask about the rings for the kids. Do we have any plans for that?
Again, that's, we'll probably refer that to the athletic director, and, uh, we, back when some of the other teams won the Whipple, we got rings, and it's been a while since that had happened. So, uh, there was a question about that. So, I said we would have you and Mrs. Sispaniac and our athletic director bring up that information to us.
Glenn, do you remember how we did it last time?
No, we did, we just.
It was just something, at the time, we had actually said that we feel it would be appropriate to do that. We had a couple teams in relatively short period of time, we did it for the one team, because they were such a long fan.
Football was first?
I believe so, yeah. And then, you know, at that point, the board said that we should be doing it if they make that kind, especially for a small school like we are and everything, making the types of achievements they have for them to state playoffs and all that, and they deserve something special. At that time, the board agreed to it, again.
Was it done the same process back then, too, that we're doing it now?
Well, it was stated by the board back then, that was something we felt we should do for any of the teams to make, uh, win the Whipple and move on to the states. Again, um, they, they would still take board action, as they, it probably isn't.
So, someone has presented to the board? Is that what you're saying?
They'll have, present recommendations for it.
They've already started the process? Just curious.
Today?
Today.
I think a lot of that got lost. I mean, it's been, what is it? And 12 years since we've had a.
Well, I mean, we've, a lot of us been on the board since then, and we all know they did it back then, too. I thought, I thought it was already in the process, to be honest with you.
It's always something the board takes action on, but it was, at that time, that board, it's not something that the written policy or directive, we directed the board, but boards change, so it's the type of thing that, again, you know, we just need to direct them, because, again, I don't think we actually have that as a line item in the budget, so I'm sure we can find a, a spot.
Thanks.
Okay. I thought there was something that we had done, I don't remember the details behind it, but we all agreed at that time that this is a perfect thing to do.
When did you say the last, it would have been 2009?
I think it's somewhere back in there, yeah.
A long time ago.
Yeah, I don't, I remember the football, I don't remember the soccer.
Yeah.
Would it be something that we would, you know, could we take an action to, I don't know if that would be like a resolution or an AR or something, like, to put that, if that's something that we would do moving forward if they were, if we have a championship team, or is it something that we think that we just need to?
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think it's something that we should have someone ask us, are we going to get it? I think it's something that should be automatically done. So, I don't, because I don't know what the process would be to do that. Can you put it in the roles committee? I don't know.
I think right now, like, Ms. Palavich, they would just authorize us to purchase them, is that? Talking about going on a future.
Yeah, like, just for future planning, like.
Every time that happens.
Because I could see how it would have gotten forgotten, and I wouldn't have thought of it.
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought.
I think the simplest thing.
I'm sorry.
Line item as a budget, even though it's.
Yeah, maybe the simplest thing, but when I'm, and I agree with her, we shouldn't have to get to that point. It should be automatic, and then we vote on it. If, if we had it in.
Well, I think if you would have, if we would have had the same athletic director at that time, it would have been brought up earlier.
Isn't something, like, to put as a line item in the athletic budget?
That's what I'm saying.
Even if we had a different athletic.
Four board members that were on those teams that got the rings then, and none of us brought it up.
Right. Well, again, it's.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it should be something that you should have anywhere, it automatically gets, it's an achievement that's, granted, we haven't done it too often. I hope we have to have it in the budget every year, but, I mean, it would be nice if you don't have to have a parent come down and ask.
Yeah. No, I understand. Okay. Anything else under athletics?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Who did we, where we at here? Ms. Moretti, Policy and Legislative Affairs, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. Under report, I just want to let everyone know, after the board discussion last week regarding some curriculum review, I have reached out to other school districts, as well as done research into their policies. So, um, the policy committee will meet at the end of the month, and we will discuss what we all found, and we will have a report then at that time for the board. So, in March, we'll have a, a detailed report on that. Under 13.2, recommend the board rescind its motions adopted in December 2024 and January 2025 to amend District Policy Number 103, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students, and District Policy Number 104, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff, due to the judicial ruling invalidating the 2024 Title IX Regulations. Such actions shall result in the reinstatement of Policy Numbers 103 and 104 as previously approved by the board on January 17th, 2023.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Palavich. Any question on the motion?
Um, I guess I just wanted to state a reason why, like, I will be opposing. I do understand the executive order. I understand the movement to rescind to the 2020 rules and all those, and I understand that, you know, we are, as a school entity, that we have to do that. I think it's really good to clarify, and our solicitor can definitely correct me if I'm wrong, information from the Education Law Center, PA, that I think sometimes there's a lot of, like, misunderstanding as to what an executive order does, and that it does not change law, it is not law. The president does not have the authority to rewrite federal civil rights laws through an executive order, and accordingly, I think it's really important to note that while we are reverting back to different wording, the president's order does not and cannot repeal existing laws that make it illegal to discriminate against transgender, intersex, or non-binary people. The Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, which prohibits employment discrimination based on sex, and the Supreme Court's decision in Bostock versus Clayton County affirmed that based on sex does include sexual orientation and gender identity. Those are still the law of the land, that an executive order directs the actions of various government agencies, including the Department of Education, and how they will act or respond. So, I think that there are, sometimes we see those things, we think, oh, the law changed, and it didn't. And, um, the federal court decisions do not have any effect whatsoever on state laws. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Act and its regulations independently lawfully prohibit discrimination in schools based on gender identity and expression and sexual orientation. All Pennsylvania public schools, including charter schools, remain liable under these provisions to prevent discrimination against LGBTQ plus students, and of course, staff. So, I think it's just good to clarify that, like, we're not going to discriminate against anybody, and that, you know, an executive order doesn't change law. And I think it's just, in these times of a lot of confusion and upheaval, really good for administration, our school board, to further affirm our commitment to all of our students. We say that all dynamos belong, and all dynamos belong. And I think that there is opportunity, whether it's through policy or through board resolutions, to take a very good stamp on how we support all of our learners. So, I just wanted to say that.
So, if I may.
Yeah.
This action has nothing to do with an executive order.
Okay. I thought it does.
It does. In 2020, uh, new regulations were adopted dealing with sexual harassment in schools. And those regulations establish certain procedures that have to be followed. There are complaints.
Yeah.
Of sexual harassment. In 2024, the Biden administration propagated new regulations.
Yeah.
Which in part dealt with transgender issue, but also established different, uh, procedures.
Yeah.
That differed from 2020 regulations. In January, uh, federal court invalidated the Biden regulations. So we need to have our policies reflect the procedures and the substance of the 2020 regulations because that's not what we're obligated to.
Yeah. It just, it makes, it shows the difference too, because we voted on, last month, we voted on the 2024 procedures.
Later, there's a federal court decision that validated it.
It's very confusing and it's alarming. I think there's a lot of reactions and feelings about it. And so I just think it's good that we, I understand our adoption of rescinding.
Critical that are, in particular, that our procedures align with the 2020 regulations.
Yes. Thank you.
And that's what this does.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other question on the motion? All in favor? Opposed?
Oppose.
Motion passed. Uh, please, enter your vote selection.
Item 13.3, recommend the board approve the first reading of the policies listed below. One, 116 tutoring, 709.1 school police officers, 717 cellular phones, 917 parents' family involvement, 113.2 behavior support, 202 non-resident students, 247 hazing, 249 bullying, cyberbullying, 254 educational opportunities for military children. Oh, and to retire, 248 unlawful harassment.
Sorry about that, right screen.
Yeah, that's okay. I wasn't down that far. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. And at this point, we'll open up for the board members who have any discussion items. Seeing none, um, we'll move to audience comments. Any audience comments on any items?
I have a question. What was that man's question when he came down? I didn't understand.
Field updates.
It was about the football field.
Yeah, this update. And again, it's just moving to phase two of what we started back, uh, last year there, so. All right. Seeing no audience comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Aye, savit. Thank you for attending today.
Thanks, everyone. Stay healthy.